For Tuesday, March 8th of 2022, the time is 7:00 PM. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Black of the United States of America and treaty of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to consideration of the agenda for tonight, just a couple of quick comments there. I formulated this agenda working with Sarah a little over a week ago. Frankly, the idea here was that we did not meet last month and didn't want to have too much time go by because we had had a lot of conversations about some pretty meaty topics, namely the master plan, some things coming up in township soon. So I wanted to kind of get us back into the rhythm a little bit here and start having some conversations around moving forward and making some plans, things that are going to be coming up. So that's really from a high level, the purpose of this meeting. So with that, is there any questions or thoughts on the agenda this evening or anything that anybody has any concerns about? So hearing that, could I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is approved. We'll move on into it. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest for tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the meeting minutes from January 11th of Guess we'll just go through each member to see if there's any edits or anything need Again, very detailed minutes, so great job putting them together. It's like, I'm glad I don't have to do that. I would not do a good job of it. If there's no edits or suggestions for edits here, could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 11th of 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. From January 11th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public comment on the agenda items this evening. Is there anyone that would like to make any public comments? If so, hearing, there is nobody, okay? Move on to the next section. Okay, so ongoing reports, zoning administrators' report.
Um, I don't have anything specific, and I guess there isn't a zoning administrators' report in the packet, so I can get that from Jackie. We'll put that in your next packet for you. I'm sorry, that wasn't included in there. And I hope everybody had a good time at the training on Saturday. Maybe not a good time isn't the right word, but learned something, a nugget of something, hopefully, at the training. And if you have any questions or when you're reading through the documentation, if you have any questions or anything like that, feel free to reach out to me.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, good job, Sarah, on the training Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a big effort on you guys' part, and I thought you put it together really well.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to say I really appreciate the opportunity and the, you know, the commitment to us to provide the training. I thought it was, for me, it was very valuable.
Yeah, maybe it would make sense. I don't know, you know, they mentioned a couple of different trainings throughout the training, in the morning and in the afternoon. So if there's anything that kind of looks of interest to anybody and you wonder about maybe hosting that, we could look into that too and inviting everybody else. And so if there were any of those topics that you're like, oh yes, I would like to know more information on that, let me know.
And Sarah, I would echo their comments. I was going to bring it up a little bit later when we got into the master plan discussion, but to me, it was very thought provoking and just reaffirmed some things what I already had some idea about, but brought up a lot of new things that I hadn't never thought about. So, and actually made it easier as I was reviewing this master plan to think about it a little differently than what I would have ordinarily going into it. So, it was a great job. Okay, so moving on, the PC representatives, the ZBA report.
We had a short meeting on the 19th. It was only eighteen, or eight minutes long, and I think it was mainly just to get the minutes approved from the prior meeting. There was no current business, and we were out the door really quick, so that's all there is to report. No action items carried forward.
Okay, then Torch Lake Township Board Representative, I guess Jason's.
Yes, Jason's gone. I can tell you that next week is the annual meeting for the budget, so you'd want to check out the township website if you have any interest in either, you know, attending where they pass the budget or it's just previous to the regular meeting or just before the annual meeting, I believe.
Okay, any questions for Sarah on that? Okay, moving on to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We did receive a letter from Antrim County that they are, it was a notice of intent to plan for the Antrim County master plan. So they're just letting everybody know that they're going to be working on their master plan. So we'll probably, well, we are required to receive a letter once they get done with the plan, and then we can take an opportunity to review it at that time.
So just from their perspective, what is their planning requirements and process similar to what we would go through or is it?
It's the exact same.
Exact same.
Yeah, except for, you know, they're looking at a much bigger scale at the county. But yeah, you know, when you start planning, the master planning process, you set out an intent to plan, you work through it, then it gets distributed to everybody that's around you, and in the county, they have to send it to everybody that's within the county. And it goes out for a 63-day review period where we can take a look at it, provide comments, and then they have a public hearing before they, I don't know if the county planning is going to approve it or if they make a recommendation to the commissioners, county commissioners. So, same process for the township.
Where are they in the schedule?
They just started it. So they're just saying, okay, we, this has a date of March 2nd on it that we, we're going to start looking at it. I have not heard, this talks about an amendment, so I haven't been involved in it or I haven't checked their minutes to see if there's been some discussion about why or anything like that. This, and it doesn't have a date, so I don't know if it's at just a five-year review or something happened. I don't know the history. But they're saying their work sessions are going to be just prior to their regular meetings or during the regular meetings on the first Tuesday of the month.
How do we find out if any part of the amendment affects our township?
Yeah, the, well, you know, you can participate during the process, but once we get the notice that it's ready to be viewed, that's when I want to take a look at it.
So they go through an amendment and our review could be input to them about Torch Lake Township?
Yeah.
Not before.
Yeah, I don't know that they're doing any, it doesn't mention any kind of public engagement of any kind in this intent to plan.
Sounds vague.
It is very, I mean, the law doesn't require too much. It tells you that you have to do it, so I can look into it a little bit and give you some information if there's any more to give.
I'd like to know, yeah.
Sure.
Thanks.
I think it'd be good for all of us to be apprised of that as a commission, just to understand what, if any, implications it might have. Do you know when it's, their review is due? They have to do it every five years as well.
Right, they have to do it every five years. I just don't know if, because it talks about they made a motion to amend the plan, so there must have been some discussion about why or how. So I can get you some more information.
So any questions on the correspondence? Okay, hearing none, guess we can move into unfinished business. So the first one is the Section 2.16 High Watermark Amendment. This came about last fall. I do think it's an, well, it's an important topic, but it's, you know, I don't know if we've ever maybe come across something that's so short but so has so many implications to it. But I guess just my objective tonight would be, I don't, I personally don't feel I would be comfortable voting on anything yet, but I would say that there's a number of questions that have come, that I've come, you know, come forward and I think that we should be prepared to address. So I think I would open it up to the floor for any thoughts or comments about this at
So while looking for something else back through the minutes, I was back in the early 2018 minutes from that planning commission, looking for references to the airport primarily. But what I did come across in a couple of different months was discussion about establishing a high watermark on the lake. So, you know, that's, we're four years into this, so I agree that, I think that it's an important thing that we need ironed out. I'm not, I don't know if we want to discuss specific things right now. I agree that, I don't think we're going to get it hammered out enough to vote on anything tonight. Was kind of hoping Bill Sturtevant might have been here tonight because he did a lot of research on that during his tenure and he's got quite a bit of information, so, you know, maybe we could coax him into coming in while we're doing this. But do we want to open it up for all discussion regarding the high watermark right now?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Then I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I think this is an important thing for us to get hammered out, and I'm, I guess I'm sort of in favor of establishing an elevation as opposed to from the water. And I think the biggest reason is this will eliminate the fluctuation that can happen with going from the water's edge. We all know that the lake kind of swashes around, so today's, today's level or today's shoreline might not be tomorrow's shoreline. So there was a, an incident here just a short time ago where some people were six inches into the setback, and they had to take apart part of their house to get that out. And it very well could have been caused by a lake fluctuation because we don't know when that first measurement was taken. And six inches is a pretty small fluctuation to make you take your house apart. So I think having the elevation in the lake, that's a set thing, and once it's measured and that's what it is, it's not going to change. So I think although there may be a little confusion how to implement this, shouldn't be, but, but people are going to have to get used to, but once it's there, it's going to, it's going to protect people from that kind of thing. I felt really bad for those people having to take the house back apart for six inches of the lake. So I guess that's my comment on it. I'm for establishing an elevation in the lake as a benchmark.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Other thoughts?
I, it's interesting that you found some, when looking for airpark information, and I did the same thing, and I came across the ones that you did, but also the December 10th, 2019, there's quite a long discussion about it. And the person named, last name Grobel, I'm unfamiliar with who that is, but the, the finding of this and how it ended was that the planning commission has no authority to stab, to establish an elevation. Also, when I did, just trying to fact find, get information on the previous time and talked with a person from Eagle, the interesting quote that I took from one of the documents that she shared was, "Before regulating a land use or activity, the problem should first be defined, and the goals for the regulations will achieve," and what the goals are that the regulation will achieve, "must be documented to avoid legal challenges." And it should be supported in the master plan. So my feeling is because we are going to be reviewing our master plan, if in that process of, I mean, it's not in our master plan, but if we see that as a part of our master plan that this would support, I don't know, the environment, you know, because what Lake Charlevoy did, it's because of a buffer zone, they did the whole lake. I just, I don't think we have enough facts right now to make a decision. And I would like to do it in coordination with our master plan. I think that would be an appropriate time. Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Did you need me to repeat? Okay. Okay. The whole thing? Well, we're going to be in the process of reviewing our master plan, and I, bottom line, I would be more comfortable with having this in coordination, supported by our master plan. Because to me, a little bit, it's, well, I didn't know about a person having to take down part of their house, but my initial feeling was it's creating a problem to create a solution because we do have anecdotal like this last summer where everybody's on the north end, everybody's dock was underwater, but, you know, I'd like to hear from the drain commissioner. I'd like, just so that we really have a solid basis for, because we're putting, we would be putting a burden on our property owners having to get a survey, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Denise.
May I ask her a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You referenced something that Chris Grobel said about not being able to, not having the authority to do something?
Yes.
Can you tell me what that was?
Okay, I can give you, I made some more, if anybody wants this, I made some more copies. The PC has no authority to establish an elevation, only enforce water's edge as it sees it. This discussion is not for the, the planning commission. It's a zoning administrator's job to, that's how this discussion ended, so it was seeing that the zoning administrator has sufficient judgment to, as it's, as it stands right now.
So who has the authority to establish it?
That's, well, there's a couple of things. So Grobel was the planning consultant for the township. That's who that person is. And the high watermark can be established basically by court order or the state can do it. So I partially agree with his statement, but I think that the planning commission can put something in your ordinance for measuring setbacks. That, that's your intent. You're not necessarily establishing a high watermark of the lake for other enforcement. It's, it's a line for a setback measurement or a property line type of thing. So I partially agree, but I partially disagree with his statement.
So maybe saying that, the same thing, I think, but perhaps a little different is, we wouldn't have the authority to say the high watermark is set at 575 feet or whatever it is. We could have the authority to say we can set it at 50 feet back from, from that reference point on the soil if we wanted to. Wherever that, wherever that high watermark.
Well, I mean, that's your measurement, so it's a kind of like how the township determines how to measure it. I mean, you could, I'm trying to think of another example where, you know, you can't hold anybody else to it. You know, Eagle isn't going to recognize the township's high watermark establishment, but we can write a definition of high watermark to be whatever we want. And if you, you know, it could be just, just as easy as you're saying, it's vegetation or it's the water's edge, it could be a number, just nobody else is going to recognize it except for Torch Lake Township in dealing with lot lines and structures and setbacks. Versus if the state were to implement it, we still, I guess, we wouldn't have to measure from it, you know, but it's, that's, it's established, people have to go by it, has other implications.
Did you just say that we can assign a number to it, but it just wouldn't be recognized outside of Torch Lake Township?
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess it's essentially, you know, we can write definitions to say whatever we want them to say. So it's just a definition that we're, that we're writing in our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I did, I did some research. I didn't print it out, but I could send it. I looked at about eight different ordinances in Michigan and Wisconsin. Wisconsin happened to have more lakes that fluctuated a lot. I don't know if it was more rivers running to the lakes. And I wrote down some things. Their planning commissions, it was to standardize a requirement for the ordinance so that it could apply to all applicants in all years. And I looked for high watermark, I didn't find much, but a lot of them have mean watermark. And had, if there's annual measurements exist, they use the mean and not the average, not the high, not the low. And if annual measurements don't exist, to establish, establish it based on an average elevation and then measure it and say how often, said regularly with a surveyor and assess it every five years when you update the master plan. So it could be a recommendation from the planning commission to modify the ordinance because it really is for setback. And that story that you told is horrible. So someone probably one year got it approved, it measured 50, I don't know if they were doing a modification of their home, and suddenly it's, you know, 49 feet, six inches, and have to remove it. What I read says that wouldn't apply. So once it's approved, it's approved based on the mean, unless there was a modification of the structure.
Or Sarah probably knows more about, about it than I did. I don't know if it was, it could have been, you know, that, Bill, or it could have been, maybe they just went ahead and built more than where it was. So, because I don't know the whole story.
Right.
But I know that part of it. And, and if, and if everybody follows the rules, you know, there's, there's a way to prevent that from a year later or, or after the final, or at the final inspection, saying, well, you're a little too close.
Add two more boards. Anyway, that's what I read. It was all about mean, or not all, mostly about mean as opposed to high watermark to, to recognize that water levels fluctuate, as it did in Torch last August by a lot, not for a long time, but.
Yeah, I guess, and I'm certainly no expert at this by any stretch, but to me, the mean, the mean is obviously the average between highest and lowest. And if you establish a mean as the reference point, that mean can change over time. The high watermark, I suppose in theory could as well, but if it's an established elevation that is, you know, set, it's X number of feet, it is, it's an elevation, it doesn't change. And so it seems to me that being able to kind of reference to something like that, if that's the right measure, I'm not saying it is, but if it were, you would have more certainty or consistency with what you're planning. I'd be curious to know, like in those, in your research around the mean, what happens over long-term averages, that mean goes up, does everybody shift, and does it change over time or it just hasn't changed from what?
No, so the mean's the most common, as opposed to the higher, low, or average. It's the most common measurement. But that's for where, where measurements existed historically, and I don't know if we have that. I'm guessing we don't. And so, in effect, it establishes a range.
Right, yeah.
It's 50 feet from the mean, in some years it might be 49, in some years it might be 52, but either is okay because it was based upon a mean.
The mean during that one year or the mean over 50 years or?
Over 50 years, I mean.
Long term.
Over long-term measurements of the lake's water level.
Okay. Is there, like, is there any other way to do this? The, the whole, the whole trouble was that it put a lot of burden on whoever's going out to check on these things, zoning administrator, and, and so we're looking for some way to make it not change each time they go out and look at these things. Is there any other way to accomplish that? Is there some kind of technology that we can like drop a pinpoint, this is where it is, or anything?
Put on your waders or get on a little boat and go out and touch.
It'd be, it'd be a survey.
Yeah.
It'd be based on a survey.
It'd be determining the elevation that you want to set it at.
Is there anything other than paying for surveys, anything that would be less?
No, I mean, your options, your options for it are, yeah, the elevation, the water's edge, which changes quite frequently, and then vegetation line. So you say wherever there's permanent vegetation, that's the line for the setback, which changes typically more gradually. It can change, and then if somebody puts up a seawall, it can really change your other properties around it. But that's what a lot of, you know, communities typically, I've had more communities do it based on vegetation than on the actual water's edge, just because that changes less frequently. And usually you say something permanent, you know, if there's trees, that's permanent, grass, but that can also be amended based on somebody planting grass or putting beach sand in.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, there's no perfect science. The only thing that is, as far as I'm aware, consistent would be to pick a number and do the survey. I mean, that, that's your most consistent. That's the easiest for the zoning administrator to enforce, but it is more expensive than the alternative.
That's what Charlevoy does, I'm sorry. That's what Charlevoy does, according to what Denise had provided us with. Charlevoy picked the highest lake level ever, I think, something like that, and they use that as their, as their high watermark.
So not as a physical point, but, excuse me, not as a physical point, but where that high watermark was in terms of elevation?
Yes, it's elevation.
So would, I guess that would be pretty consistent around the lake, wouldn't it?
Should be.
So that would result in everything being at least 50 feet, right? As opposed to in a low year, applicants come in, build it 50, the water comes back up, and it ends up being 47.
Right.
At least they have at least 50 feet.
Right.
The, the 590.8 feet that was proposed, this high watermark of 590.8, I don't recall what that was based off of. What was that?
Bill Sturtevant came up with that, and I don't know what that was, I don't remember what that was based on either.
That is what some of the other townships have that number. I believe Milton has that.
Does, in Cal Rapids.
Yeah, and I think it's related to Elk Lake has that, is that the same level for that? Now I'm questioning that. We were just thinking it was right here. But that is the same number that Milton has, which is on Torch Lake. I'm guessing theirs, you know, wherever theirs came from, but there's a couple of communities that use that number as their high watermark.
And I wonder if Bill Sturtevant has the information of where they came up with that.
You know, I can give him a call and ask him about it.
He's on vacation, just to let you know, he won't be back for two weeks.
Okay.
But you can call him, he's probably interested in going on the golf course then, somewhere he is.
Or maybe if it's raining that day or something. Yeah.
And I conceptually agree with the notion of having the elevation, and I'm living on the bay myself, have dealt with that. It is interesting, though, that, and we talked about with all the new seawalls and things coming in and the impacts on vegetation, because it does, those can have impacts on the vegetation because of the water then circulates around differently along the shoreline. We've certainly seen that. And it's also like in my case, you can't, I couldn't even, the ordinary high watermark for, you know, the hundred-year high watermark is what they would use. 50 feet back doesn't apply because for critical dunes, which is a big portion of Torch Lake Township and the bay, it doesn't matter. The Eagle says it's got to be 50 feet back from the high erosion line, and that's farther back yet. So I don't know that there's anything equivalent to that with Torch Lake.
What you, oh, okay.
But I, yeah, I realize we're talking about Torch Lakes. I don't, there probably isn't, but it's a question.
Currently, there is not.
There is not.
No, and Eagle only deals with the Great Lakes, so they don't have anything to do with Torch.
Okay.
From my research, there isn't much of a precedent for a high watermark on an inland lake in Michigan. And Charlevoy did it as an entire lake. lake in Michigan. And Charlevoix did it as an entire lake, and their purpose was for the environmental piece of having the buffer zone for the water quality. But they, you know, it was a coordinated effort for the whole lake, so.
When Lake Charlevoix is directly connected to Lake Michigan, too, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So it probably fluctuates a lot.
Right.
Antrim County's website does say 590.8 feet is the of Lake established ordinary high watermark as of 1973.
Does it say high watermark, or does it say lake level?
At this part of the thing, it says summertime water level.
Mm hmm.
Is that the elevation of the dam?
Yeah, because that's got a dam to regulate it. So that's, any place there's a dam, they set up what the elevation is supposed to be, so that they regulate it that way. So you have some smaller lakes, like, I'm thinking, like Cedar Lake over in Lelandot County, that's got a high watermark, because there's a dam that goes into West Bay. Or out of Silver Lake in Grand Travis County as well, it's got a small dam at the end of it. And it, so they have a set elevation. So that somebody monitors the dam when it's too high, they take out a board, or whatever style dam it is.
Well, to maybe draw this conclusion, or this discussion to conclusion for tonight at least, I mean, it seems to me, I think we've verified or validated that the planning commission has the legal authority to do this. Is that what we're saying?
Mm hmm.
Denise, you had raised that. Based on what you've heard, does that make sense to you, what you've heard tonight?
In this context, yes.
Okay. The other item was that I personally would love to see the Bill Sturtevant research and the summaries of things that he has collected, just from an information packet perspective. Is that something we could get from him and then distributed to the planning commission?
I will get ahold of him and ask him if he's willing to share that with us.
Okay. If if we got that, then the only other thing I would say is that, you know, I guess I would ask the commission to think about, like, some kind of a consulting arrangement with somebody that knows, I mean, Eagles got, as you said, they're, Barbara, they're focused on the Great Lakes. But somebody that's, that knows and does this for a living, to say, you know, understanding the dynamics of all of this, to give us some input here, I think would be, I would like to hear that.
Wondering if that's something, well.
I'm not sure who it would be. So it's easier said than done, but.
Right. There may be somebody even at, like, the Watersheds Center or Tip of the Met or something, that could at least provide some background, or some more knowledge that you might be able to ask questions to.
And maybe the surrounding townships, was it Milton you said, did the?
No.
You know, maybe they had done something, and maybe it's just borrowing from what they had done, other than just, it would be nice to know why they picked that number. I heard the dam and stuff like that, just to know why they picked it. Because again, this, you know, you talk about the six inch, this has implications for people, big time. So once we set it, it is what it is.
Yeah. And Milton does have frontage on Elk Lake. So I'm guessing that's, you know, it was like, okay, well, Elk Lake has this number, that's high watermark, and then it just translates over to the other lakes as well. You know, I don't know for sure, but that would be my guess. But I will see, I'll reach out to the Watershed Center, too, and see our Tip of the Met, and see if they have anything that they can help us with that. Or even soil erosion, they may have some insight.
Okay. Any other suggested actions that we would want to take here?
So I call on any surveyor that would like to show up and make a deal for all residents of Torch Lake Township, and do everybody at once.
There you go.
That's why I liked Bob's proposal, really establishing an elevation, so that you don't, I guess you might have to still get a surveyor to measure, if there's an elevation established.
Yeah, if you're going to be held to a standard, I think a professional should do it. So we're not taking some damage.
Yep.
But I do like what Barb said about that, rather than maybe even having that mark in the lake somewhere, it's at the high erosion mark, you know, where you can access it by land, it's, you know, probably easy, it's easy to see.
Yeah.
Less expensive.
But but maybe I'm confused on this, then, because when I think about it on the bay, if you set it at a certain elevation, sometimes that that could be in the water. The actual mark where it meets the topography of the land could be underwater at times. In theory, it shouldn't be if it's the high water, but, you know, then you get the hundred year floods that happen every five years, and then boom, it happens. So but whatever that is, with climate change things happening, it could very well be that you establish it. And so if you're, build a house, a new house, and it's set back 50 feet from that line, but then all of a sudden, the water comes up, and now, you know, the danger is if you don't set it at an elevation that ties into the land itself, then you run the risk of somebody's out of compliance, because now the water's much closer than what it was supposed to be even with the high water. That's the situation with our house. So, I mean, is that, am I looking at that the right way?
I think so. Sounds, it sounds right to me.
Okay. And so a person, because everybody that's got an established house would be in compliance. You'd set this, and then everybody's grandfathered. So then it's new construction, or an addition on a home closer to the lake, or what have you. So, right, good.
I guess I should, I don't know what the upcoming months are going to bring. How high a priority is this high watermark discussion? Is this something that you want me to move quickly to find somebody and have them come to the next meeting, regardless of the agenda? Or is it kind of like, we want to work on it as time permits? Like, I guess I'm trying to gauge.
Well, I would say, it a little bit depends on how quickly we can get our hands on the information. I mean, if Bill's willing to share that, and he's gone for a couple of weeks, so maybe next month. And if you're able to make the call sometime in the next few weeks, we got it in advance of the next meeting. But I would say certainly the April or May meeting would be nice to try and address this. But I mean, there may be, it may get kicked down the road a little bit, if we have some high priority application or something coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how, is there a season to applications for that setback? And if so, would it make sense to have that?
Right.
If that season is May, June, July, when there's more people here to have it at a planning commission during one of those months, so that more people can come in, listen, weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, the, our permit season is picking up now through the summer for anybody that's doing a land use permit or construction project. You know, at this point, if we were to do any kind of public hearings or anything like that, it would be the summer, I would say. Because if we're talking about it in April, it's, I mean, June would be probably the earliest, maybe July. If you want to do any kind of input gathering, you know, maybe that's something to think about if you're trying to gauge public interest. Maybe we just do kind of a general, like, I guess you'd call it a public hearing, but you'd publish it and just say, we're seeking input on this. Kind of not as formal as when we have an amendment, and we say, here's a public hearing, here's the language. Be like, we're considering, please tell us what you think, type of thing. Could always do that.
I like that. Because if we had the research we were just describing, and then we all kind of reached agreement, hey, we're kind of leaning here. But, you know, then getting the, doing the hearing of sorts, an informal hearing to get the input to supplement it, one way or the other, would be great. Well, that was good discussion. That was more than I anticipated. So that was good. Guess we can move off of the high watermark and go to item B, the strategic priorities for 2022, specifically the master plan. So certainly wasn't envisioning tonight's discussion around the master plan to be saying, hey, let's reword section such and such, and all of that. It was much more broad. And Sarah had passed out her hand, distributed a couple of questions. And I had some broad questions, too, for the group. But really, what, you know, part of this was stirred by, you know, when I first took the role as chair, in one of the first meetings, I had mentioned that, to me, I was kind of struck by the recent amount of change in the area, partly driven by COVID, driven by the influx of growth of people, certainly the the dynamics of what it means for people that are staying, you know, you know, a lot of people more living from home or working from home, or if they don't live up here permanently, they are here more, and they are spending more time here than what they used to. And it was interesting, just the other day, there was a ticker, was a Traverse City ticker thing came out, and I was reading that, and they were talking about a couple of Traverse City, and I think there's one other community mentioned in there, had, they were talking about how they were redoing their master plans, because a lot of it was driven by this change that they're experiencing. Did anybody see that by chance? And it was, it just kind of underscored that. And then also, just knowing what we're hearing of kind of activity out in the community that's coming forward, it certainly prompted me to ask a lot of questions around this. So, so I guess what I would do is, one of the things we asked, that all of you have an opportunity to kind of peruse the master plan, scan it, and then come to today with some thoughts about what your current view of the master plan is. Does it accomplish what you think it should as a strategic plan for the community, or does it not? If so, why does it, or why does it not? So those are the types of questions we're looking for. So I guess I would maybe start with that. First of all, has everybody had a chance to go through the documents? Yeah. Does, you know, if you think of, first of all, Sarah, what, could you help us, who do you view as the audience for the master plan?
I think that it's kind of a combination. You're looking at the township, obviously, the planning commission, the township board, you're using it in your rezoning applications. You're also looking at the general public, individuals that are buying property or houses. Then you're also have individuals that are looking to do development, typically commercial development or residential development, to try to figure out, you know, kind of establish what the community is, and then where it's going in the future.
Okay, so that's, obviously, it's got a broad, broad range of audiences. So I guess I would ask anybody here to, you know, provide any kind of thoughts that they had, or what was their first reaction when they went through the plan, whether it was just recently, or it was several, you know, a long time ago, if you've been a prior commission member. Anybody want to volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
I feel like a lot of what I've heard is a lot of businesses wanting to do something different. And and I didn't feel like the master plan really helped us make any decisions with them. It didn't seem very helpful. It was kind of vague. That was my biggest piece of input.
I'll go. I think there are portions of it that, let me start over. I think some applications we're seeing are more sophisticated, more businesses. And I think the plan is both hard for applicants that are coming in with a different, a much different idea on how to navigate the process. And I think that the, there are certain elements of the master plan that can help inform the ordinances to make it more sophisticated, do allow for some change and not all change. Changes, to me, like art, some's good, some's not. Barb might have a different opinion. And I think the master plan helps define that in common. And I think there are some elements, some portions of the master plan that are left open to interpretation.
Yeah, certainly, certainly relate to both of your comments. Other thoughts?
As I've looked through it from time to time, one thing that has been sticking out to me are the surveys and the and the statistics of the demographics, age of our residents. And I was surprised at what a high percentage of seniors and older people that are, as either semi or permanent residents. I'm wondering if we're going to be able to resurvey this to get a better idea of maybe where we want to point this thing, who's going to be here.
I'm with you.
And because a younger demographic, they they may have different expectations of what they want out of this area. Also, I was surprised at looking at some of the usage statistics for the preserve, the day park, the boat launch, whatever. It was a lot less than what I thought it was, which tells me that we we have a very high out of the area usage. Usage by nonresidents really is accounting for the majority of the usage of these facilities. So I'd like to know the thoughts of our population about where we want to go with all this stuff in the future. So I don't know, have you heard, are we going to have a new survey, or recampus all this stuff?
Well, that's, that'll be up to us. So that's the purpose of this discussion, really, Bob, is to get it to to decide what we want to do about this, if anything, at that, at this point. So I'm not trying to steer one way or the other, but I am trying to ask the questions, because this is exactly the type of discussion that I think we need to have.
I think we need something like that as a starting point, to help guide us. Give us a framework of how we want to do this. Otherwise, it's just going to be about me.
I'm totally with Bob. I feel like the the survey that was done, and then the people that you see show up to the meetings, I feel like those aren't necessarily the same people that filled it out. The survey was extremely long and boring, and I didn't feel like the questions were well worded at all, to the point where I personally was over it, and don't tell depth, but I didn't finish it, because it was so, it was painful. So I would hope that we do another one, and we make it more fun and less painful. That would be fantastic.
Engaging.
Yes, yes, exactly. Maybe we give people a hat for filling it out. I don't know, give them some reason to fill it out.
I, I think that, I, all of your comments resonate with me personally, so, in my review of it. But I'd like to hear other thoughts.
Especially after the Saturday meeting, and I revisited the master plan, and it seems really broad. Because one of the things that really stood out to me from that session was, your master plan should be really tight and manageable, measurable. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he said you should have maybe three goals. Was that, was that right?
Yeah.
And, you know, ours is really broad, and I don't know how, I have no idea how we're measuring it, you know?
Yeah.
And so.
I would just that three goals. He said he'd rather have you had three good goals you're going to accomplish than 20 that you're not going to do anything with.
Right. And then I had some conversations with some other people, and how some communities in our area are really working collaboratively, and pulling funds in, and having people come to them and saying, we, we see you have this land, you want to do blah, blah, we want to invest here, rather than them having to go out and search for people. So I, I'm all for being more specific, really zeroing in on our highest priorities, and in making sure that they're measurable, and we keep coming back to them. And, you know, do we need to adjust? How are we doing on this? What do we need to do to make this happen?
Is there, is there a really good master plan that you can think of that would be a good example for us to look at, to be inspired by?
You know, I said something like, kind of like that to Andy, you know, that you could look at different examples, or if anybody's looked at examples. It, you know, every community is a little bit different. So I can direct you to one that's, you know, it hits everything that you need to hit for the state. There's other ones that are really visual, they seem a little bit more out of the box. One of them, I mean, you could look, and I mean, any of them there, because, like, full disclosure, I'm a consultant, you know, and I write master plans. And so I know the master plans we've written, and I think they're amazing. So I can direct you to some of those. I could take a look around, too, at some of the communities. But I just started looking at Flint, the city of Flint. They had a huge, and granted, it's a lot bigger, but, I mean, they had a lot of community engagement. It's very visual, like, when you read their plan, and it just, I don't know, it kind of makes you excited, like, about planning. So I could send you a couple of links, if you want me to, just, you know, you can go from kind of one extreme to just like, here's the basic, if it checks all the boxes, and you, you can be somewhere in between.
Yeah. Do you have any, was there any detail that, you know, you know of that they, what they did to get the community engaged in in that project?
You know, they had a lot of stakeholder groups. They went out, they did a lot of, like, on the ground, walking around. You know, they had a lot of stakeholder groups. They went out, they did a lot of like on the ground, walking around the neighborhoods to get people involved in it on there. And we didn't do it. It was a different company out of Chicago, but, I mean, hours and hours and hours. And I can, I don't even know what their budget was for it. I think I saw, but I can't remember. The thing that's kind of amazing.
Probably bigger than what ours would be.
Right, absolutely. And the thing that's kind of amazing about Flynn is that there's a lot of community pride, like not that there's not other places, but if you like run into a city, like they have amazing community pride and there's a lot of foundations based there and they put their money back into the community. So, but I can send you some stuff. There's a very visual too online because they have like a whole storyboard. That was what John was talking about at the meeting too. You know, just a different way to present the information to the public. Instead of just reading this document, you kind of can click on through things online and get to what you need to get to and that interest.
And I, and then that meet at the training, that was, some of the questions that I had raised were that, you know, being in business, and obviously this is not business, this is a community and government in a sense, but it, but the point is, is that, you know, especially with today's kind of way that people interact with information, it's so boiled down, it's so interactive and engaging, and it's so, you know, specific. And it seems to me there are so many tools that we could use to help not only collect data and information, but then project it back to people. And both from an interaction when we're developing it, but also, you know, once we get honed in on a product of whatever that product is, that gets people more excited that they would read it, because it's, it's hard to, I mean, we're planning commission members here. And I wager that for most of us, at least for me, I guess I won't speak for the rest of you, but for me, it's like, oh, it was like brutal. And it's like, and I get, there's pieces of that. I mean, I get that, but it's like even the actions, because I thought, okay, we're getting the meat, but I'm like, oh my God, there's, you know, it's like pages of, and, and they're, they're more like, they're almost like principles. As opposed to specific actions, they're more like things you would live by. And every one of them, of course, we would support and promote consistency between the master plan and the county master plan and everything. Or, you know, but they're more principles, they weren't actions. So I'm not trying to pick on it, but it's just like, we need to kind of hone it down and say, okay, to the question three to five to seven, or whatever that number is, here's some things we want to accomplish in the next five years. And we can measure, did we accomplish them or not? Or was there some change that we, that came about we weren't expecting? I mean, I think, I don't know, I'd be really excited to engage in a process like that and really do, you know, really kind of take a step back, rethink how we go about creating it in the first place and rethink what a master plan really is. And then, of course, we've got things we want to address like the airpark potentially, or, you know, other dynamics that are going on in the community. So I, I, I for one would really like to do that and start it relatively soon here.
I, I'd love to see some example plans. I've also, I mean, I work for an engineering firm, but we've been, I've been a part of, I don't know, maybe a hundred master plans, but they're all for cities. And they're all for cities in the West. It all for cities that are, want to develop and grow. I think our master plan is broad because it's written for what the state requires. I think because probably a lot of residents said we don't want much to change, and so broad has been okay. When we met in November, is what I proposed, we update a master plan and we look at a few areas where we do some more specific planning. And that might be where there's some, some vision. But all of that is what I think, I think there's funding, I mean, master plans can be probably a little bit of money and a lot, but there's grant funding available to do more planning. And I think if we had, you know, I don't know what they, what do you call, charrettes? Different things where a community comes out and you try and gauge if, you know, if the residents are using the day park or it's really just people coming through and residents might say, you know, we don't want to put more into the day park. You might have 70% of the residents say, there's a lot that we don't want to change. But the commercial areas, boy, it'd be good if it kind of looked like this and it had this kind of land use. And that might help guide some of the three or five particular objectives, talk about a more walkable community. I would love that too. How do you implement that as part of every application that comes? Whether it's a trail on 88 or on 31, somewhere off on the side, and something that is based on what people in the township say, here's what we want. And we might be, need to get ready for, we don't want anything to change, but that's also an update to the master plan to make it less broad. So I, I think we need to get input, whether it's a survey, I think survey might be a part of it. I think you get some engaged meetings here where you listen and take notes, and I, and there are some like land use games that you can kind of play and make it more active as opposed to just people getting up and speaking for three minutes. And you have some visuals on the wall of what it is and what it might be and have some other, I mean, I can't think of anywhere other than Alden. And I really don't know other townships' master plans, but to see some might be, these are three or four, and let the community look at three or four and say, ooh, we like this parts of this one, we don't like that part of that one, we don't want to attract development, but boy, it'd be good to guide certain kind of development into our commercial nodes or hamlets or whatever, you know? That kind of thing that might have some more specific ordinance along them, particularly for the design guidelines for it.
Absolutely. And you could easily envision like, you know, because we struggled when we were looking at that chapter, whatever that chapter was when we had like the buildings and the, you know, the faces and things we were talking about. And we were all trying to describe, well, what does the Torch Lake Hamlet look like? What does the Eastport Hamlet look like? But you could imagine in the session, just like you were describing, where we could some, get some, you know, kind of graphical representation of what it might look like. You know, and thinking about what the buildings and the setbacks would be and is the parking in front or is it behind or all those types of things. And then kind of, you know, that might help shape some of the ordinances ultimately too. And we'd all be speaking from kind of the same visual of what something might look like. And then when we're having conversations and somebody, a future developer comes in and wants to put whatever, we said, well, does it, you know, does it fit like these graphics that we were thinking? Well, it doesn't. So we need to adjust this, but right now we don't have anything like that.
And one of the benefits of having community engaged like that is that then everybody recognize, I don't get it just my way. Bob just doesn't get it his way. There's give and take because there's a lot of people's input and needs to satisfy everybody in the township.
And to go along with what you were saying, Andy, a couple places have resonated with me. It has mentioned, what is our brand? I don't know if you picked up on that, but, and it was referenced a few times. And I, I don't know what our brand is, but I think a brand is important, that we all have this common understanding of what our township is. And so I think that's an important thing to think about.
I think it would be helpful to understand, or maybe if, as we start the process ahead, you call out some things that there's really awesome things that we could do, but oh wait, FYI, you only have these small sections of commercial zone land available. So you're limited there. Having those things called out would be helpful, so we don't start crazy.
Yeah.
So Sarah, what would, you know, what would be the process? Because, you know, even if we started this now and maybe took a little bit more time because it might be a different way that we've gone about it in the past. Basically, a year from October would be the five-year mark. So we're not that early by doing something now and given the dynamics.
Right.
If we wanted to restart this, you know, kick this off this year, what would, how would we go about and what would that process look like, do you think?
Well, what I would suggest is, and this is kind of your next agenda item, but in the, your annual report put in there that you want to work on the master plan this year because it's going to, you have to have the funds available from the township board. And I don't know, I don't know if you talked to Bob about putting anything in for the planning commission for any funds for that. I don't recall, I don't, I, I've basically have to check and see if we have the money, if there's the money there and we can go through that. Or if there's not the money there, maybe there needs to be a budget amendment, but that would be a township board issue. So maybe if there's consensus, you know, we can put something in the annual reports that we can inform them. And then I can take it one step forward and like request the money for it or find the money for it.
And part of that too, and that's a, it's a great point, I wouldn't have any idea how much to ask for.
Right.
Even if it were, you know, they were doing this tomorrow. The other thing is, is that even if we don't have money or have very limited funds and it's not feasible to do an amendment or what have you, we could look into that. But the other would be, there are certainly things that we probably could do this year, and then we hit it into the high gear, you know, when we do have the money. So that it's, we pick up a lot of speed at that point.
Yeah. Yeah, let me find out what that situation looks like, because there definitely is some things, you know, we can work on some amendments or some items, you know, if you're looking at a survey, if that's one of the big things, you know, you kind of chip that off and say, okay, that's seven or eight grand. Is that, do we have that money? Can we do that? Or we need to work on some other things, maybe there's something else. You know, I'm hearing you want to have a lot of, you know, community engagement. There's different opportunities, you know, you could, surveys one way, but then you have other sessions where people can help pick out action items, concept principles, or goals. You know, we have a, a community engagement where you throw the building blocks out and you tell people to design the township, you know? And they put it out and you take pictures and then, you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of interactive opportunities to do with the public to kind of build on that. Because I think it is important and that'll tell you if, if anything's shifting. And then maybe, you know, in that plan, you could do kind of the subarea plan, or maybe you do this overall master plan and one of your goals is to create a subarea plan for Eastport. You know, and then you'd go on to that planning and you would just hold everything that's very specific, you know, to the Eastport area and design, you know, that, that would inform your zoning ordinance. So, you know, you could kind of go all in and be like, okay, we want to do that as a part of the whole master plan and get focused in on that too. Or you say, we don't quite have the money to focus in on it, so we're just going to do the overall plan and then, and next year, the two years will narrow down on that. So I'll talk with Bob and then we'll see where we go from there. But that's what, I'm getting the feedback that you'd like to do kind of a bigger project with the master plan. And if not, at least do some, maybe some changes upfront if we can, if you can get the funding.
If I'm Bob, I want eight points of what we want to do in a budget. And I think we can, I know there's grant funding. My company finds grant funding for people all over the country. I think it's a six-figure effort.
To do it right.
I think to do it right with specific plans included. I, I mean, I'd propose we do it all in, in one effort as opposed to the master plan and then come back and do specific area plans, but that might be subject to finding, you know, grant funding.
Would, would your firm do some kind of statement of work with a quote or something?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
It's a lot like scholarships. I, I'm not kidding. It's out there and it's rarely sought after. And there's new funding available all the time. Some of it's state, some of it's federal, some of it's from, it used to be community, went CDBG community. That probably wouldn't apply here. It's not urban, but there are different funds for, you know, more rural and low-density areas. That might be one of the things that we get from you is here's some available grant funding. I can provide that as well, just because people in my company do that all the time. The people, it's all they do is get grant funding.
That's a great, great idea to dig into that. And I think Sarah too, when you're finding examples of master plans kind of to that end, is like, if you find any information on how did they come up with the plan? What was their process like? And, you know, is it, you know, what were some of the, especially some of the more, maybe more modern ones? I'm not necessarily saying ours needs to be that modern, but just, you know, people that are dealing with current rarely rapidly changing dynamics in the marketplace right now, how are they addressing it? And I'm not advocating, by the way, that this is necessarily like a super-high-growth plan. I don't, this, this community is probably not going to grow that fast. That's not what this is about. This is just about people really identifying with what we're about. So.
Okay.
Great. Thank you all for the input tonight. That was really good. So I guess moving on to new business, the annual report. Sarah, so what, what do we have to cover here on this?
So this is so annually, and I don't know if the planning commission's done this in the past or not. Annually, the planning commission is required to provide an annual report to the township board telling you what you've been doing and working on. And so this is an attempt to kind of put that together for the, for the board. Since this is my first time going through it with you, you know, this, this is usually what I like to include in my report. If you want something additional, you don't like something in there, let me know. We can, you know, it's your report in the end, your report. And like I did mention, a lot of times there are at the end kind of your 2022 goals, what you're looking to get to accomplish this year. It's not required to be in there, you know, per se, but I think that gives the board, you know, your idea. And especially if you're looking at master plan, you're like, okay, we really want to get on the master plan and work on that. So.
Was the last one a year ago?
You know, I don't know. I don't, I don't have the history. I don't know if the planning commission's ever seen one.
I feel like Jerry put something together for us. Some summary for the year that he put together.
Who was that, Lonville?
Have to be. I've been on this thing since, what, fall of 20? And we haven't had anything like that, nothing to talk about. So I've never seen one.
Sarah, can you get us an example of at least a reasonable annual report, like kind of the components of it?
Well, that's, there's one in your packet.
I don't have one in my packet. Maybe that's why I'm.
Oh. No? Well, the one.
Didn't make it.
Didn't make it. That's why it's not here.
Okay.
That explains why.
Well, I will put it on your next agenda then. I don't know what happened. I apologize. Maybe, you know what, it's probably in the digital packet, but when Jackie print, print, she just printed probably up to the master plan. Do you have the approval criteria in your packet? Probably not. That's what happened.
Okay, so.
I'll, we'll move that to the next agenda.
Okay, that would be good.
I just have a question. For the annual report, I think the, to me, the timing is interesting. Because if you're, is it the chair responsible for the annual report?
Apparently.
Yeah. And so you haven't been here for a, a whole year. So is the timing
You know.
Set up by the state or?
Nope, it's just, you have to do it once a year. You can do it typically, I prefer to do it before the township board does their budgeting so that they can put the money in for whatever you're doing ahead of time. Your timing on everything is kind of interesting because all of your terms expire at the end of October, so you get reappointment in November. The fiscal year starts April 1st, and then you have the calendar year too. So it's all interesting. So if there's a time of the year that makes more sense to you, we can make sure to try to have it done. If it makes sense to do it like in October to forward it on, I, you know, I don't, I don't know. People typically work in calendar year or calendar things.
I think baby steps are fine here too. I don't think we have to have the, you know, the best practice State of Michigan Township annual report this first time around. I think we could just get something that has the main components. I think if we said, you know, talked about the master plan, talked about some of the other things, we, I'm sure we'll have a meaningful place to start.
The last two that we've, that we've had have been in March, it looks like. I have one from Jerry and one from Bill.
Okay.
Oh, really? Okay.
You, I don't know if you want them.
Yeah. That, I mean, that would be good. It's probably, you know, and now that you say that, was it there one last summer, last spring in March?
Yeah.
Now that you say that, because he did, Bill did do that. Yeah, I mean, what we have in it is just, you know, number of meetings, when the meetings were, who were the members, and then what ordinances we worked on, public hearings we had, applications we had, trainings, miscellaneous items, kind of, you know, kind of a summary of what your minutes say essentially for the whole year. And, you know, then that goal section really would be the report. Sometimes you can pull in if you want to ZBA. Sometimes you can pull in if you want to, um, ZBA information too. I know it's a Planning Commission report, but sometimes it's nice to, um, inform the board in one area, kind of all the planning and zoning things. So you could put in ZBA, the cases they've heard, the decisions they made, and then also kind of a summary for the year of zoning permits type of thing, if you wanted to.
Sounds like something that'd be really cool to post online.
Yeah, and it's a nice summary of everything just kind of together in one spot, um, for that, so.
Okay, so I guess we'll wait for that example.
Yeah.
And go from there, and just want to make sure everybody here is in agreement with whatever we come up with.
Andy, are you going to write it and then look for comments on it? Is that the plan?
I already have a draft for you, Andy, to start.
This doesn't sound very fair.
I personally will not, not planning to write it. I might have some input on it. I will comment on it before bringing it all back to you. That's what you're meaning by writing it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about it, and the word annuals maybe got me thrown off because of all the things you described, but if I think about the last year towards a township, it's influencing what we plan to do for next year. It's kind of a looking back, looking forward. There's been a lot of increased community interest because of applications that have come in. There's new members, some new members. We rewrote the ordinance, now we want to do a master plan. I mean, that might be the four bullets around which there's, you know, a report. Would you call it annual reporter, Planning Commission report? Because the last year has been. I mean, I don't know, I wasn't on the Planning Commission before, but it seems like more, more interesting change. But if I'm wrong, tell me, like I've said before, you guys just be quiet.
It was a wild year. For sure, I missed a lot of the meetings, because I couldn't, so, but I watched, it was wild.
Is there, is there a specific format that we have to stick to?
Nope. And I guess we just.
Might be a good time to think about stirring things up a little bit on the formatting, too, to make it more engaging, as opposed to, you know, I think that would be kind of neat, too.
Yeah, let's do some disco.
And have a little bit of historical, but some future. To Bill's point, does historical, but then how that leads into what we're thinking about and why.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're, I'd take a crack, and I'll take a crack at putting down some bullet points that you or all of us can then put some words around, or again, tell me no.
No, that would be fantastic.
Something like that.
Don't let me get in the way of progress here.
In an email? Is that the right format?
Send it to me.
Send it to you.
Yep.
You're elected.
What's that?
That would be great, Bill.
I've got an idea.
That's a good idea.
No, I think that would be, that'd be fantastic. And then Sarah, you and I, when we get those, let's talk about how maybe to, if they need to be expanded or whatever, and I don't, he said bullet point, so we'll start with that, but then we'll, you know, maybe come up with some thoughts about how to best communicate it.
Yeah, um, if you can send those over by the 28th.
Is it, is that because it's, is that because it's due?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because that would give us.
I'll send it to you by Sunday.
Okay. I'm just, I just, by expectation.
No.
Okay.
Easy.
Yep. Because then that'll give us time to take a look at it and get it in the packet.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So the last item on the new business was the zoning amendment approval criteria. We're going to push that to the next, uh, next meeting. But just to give everybody a framework of what that was going to be about was, we had spent some time with the criteria when we reviewed the, uh, the, uh, special use permit recently for, in Eastport, and that was around, okay, so we had criteria, we saw how those worked. I thought it would be helpful for us to review the zoning amendment approval criteria, both from the standpoint, because having that framework in case something does come up, we will have that context, but also if we, they're, they're in the process, the steering committee is doing a rewrite, a, a proposed rewrite that we'll be looking at, but if we have any thoughts around those, might be a good time to get that back to the steering committee to incorporate as well, so. And I just wanted to be prepared for that, because front and center, those are the real important things to, to use as tools if we're evaluating something, so. That's all it was. So any more items on new business? Any questions or comments? Move on to, uh, the next item on the agenda then, the concerns of the commission. I will start. I don't really have any concerns at this point. I do want to, you know, keep this momentum going. I'm glad we had this discussion tonight. I feel really good about kind of getting everybody's brains re-engaged and get this thing going this year, so that's really all my comments. Any, any comments from the, the commission?
I agree, I like the energy of the meeting tonight. It seems like everybody's really gung ho to do some work.
Good, so I like, there'll be some.
But I have a question, if, if I may, just to go back over something we were talking before regarding the master plan. And that is, um, while going through all those minutes, there were a couple of mentions about an eight-foot apron on US 31, a long US 31 for biking, and it said, it's in there, but nobody knows about it, but I'm not sure if it meant that it's in the budget or it's in the master plan. Does anybody know?
Isn't?
Or, sorry.
It's been done.
Right.
It's that Route 35 or something, isn't it? Isn't it Bike Route 35? It comes up through here?
They put it in from Barnes Road, basically, to the, what is it, the White Road.
Oh, Dixie. Yeah.
But they put it in three or four years.
So what, other than the sign on the side of the road, what else was done?
Is it a wider shoulder?
Well, they put it in the wide shoulder.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But isn't it, to that point, similarly, isn't there the Tart Trail or something that's going to?
Yeah, they're, they're working on trying to get that up through in some way or form.
As a matter of fact, um, there's a group that, um, has formed in Eastport, and there's a meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock. So, yeah, there's, there are people that are interested, and, um, anyway, I'm one of them.
So is that something that you, are you planning on attending that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's Zoom. Um, we had an informal meeting last late summer, early, um, fall. What their plan is, the Tart Trail is finished from Traverse City to Elk Rapids. There's a piece from Elk Rapids to Charlevoix that has not been formally designated. And actually, it's not going to be called Tart Trail. There's another name for it, and I can't remember what it is right now. But they're interested in, what got me excited was, they said, don't even think about the 40 miles between, or whatever it is. Uh, they just, just think of your community, what could a trail do for your community? So we're, we're thinking three or four miles. And, um, so that's, that's kind of where our little group, it's just the Eastport neighborhood, including, um, some people in the Central Lake Township, but.
So is most of the effort to try and figure out if it should exist or where it should exist?
Both. One of the processes is whatever township it goes through, you, we have to get buy-in with the township, and there is some financial buy-in, um, because it's a long-term thing, and they want it to have maintenance and that kind of thing. But it's very dynamic, this organization, in terms of how they're partnering with funders, and they, in fact, they have assigned a person through the whole organization to our little Eastport group to help guide us, to help, um, funding, um, and, um, you know, they do want us to help bring Torch Lake Township on board, but, um, but they have, you know, donors and things like that, that, matching funds.
So is it mostly easement, uneasement? They needed, because I know in Elk Rapids, they were trying to bring it off of 31, a bunch of signs of folks that didn't want it.
Right.
They're trying to jam it back out on 31, they're trying to make the, a little bit more like north of Charlevoix, but there's not as much property that exists, probably it's going through farmland and.
Right. I mean, it's brand new, we just had a gathering, so we're getting to that point of actually learning what they do, but they said, by any means necessary, you know, we'll, we want to work with the people, we don't want to create enemies, we want, you know, but, um, whatever roads or public land or private land or whatever, however we can accomplish it. That's how they have done it in the past, so. But I'm sure they would like to come and present to our, our Planning Commission, too.
Well, maybe, maybe the next, uh, meeting, if maybe you could brief us on what you learned and what the activity is, and it's certainly something we're going to want to keep apprised of, because, you know, there's certainly some positives and some potential issues, so.
Right.
Certainly want to keep apprised of it, so thanks for bringing that up. Any other concerns of the commission members? Or questions, thoughts?
What, what kind of concerns you're looking for?
Whatever you would like to bring up.
Hell, I, I mean, I, I've been contacted about, uh, your show Memorial Day at the airpark. And last year I was on the Planning Commission, but I went over to the airpark, because it's 6 o'clock in the morning, there were things flying over my house. I'd been traveling for like two weeks, I was my day asleep till 10:00. I don't know, but I would assume that Planning Commission's got some power with at least a noise ordinance to say, if that's going to occur, I mean, it just happened last year. I don't know if there's any permits, there's camping, there's fireworks. I'm okay with some of it, I am not okay with, uh, little planes flying about 80 feet over my house at 6:00 a.m. So I went over there and talked to you guys, and said, it's best time of the day to do it. Best time of the day to do it, at 6:00 a.m. I think you get it night and night. I tried to reason with some, some of the folks there. They go, we do this all over the country, we do it in Illinois, and I'm like, you know, back to Illinois. Again, one of the things in a master plan, some change is good. I didn't like that flying over at 6:00. My guess is a whole lot of people don't, and yet it's still being planned. I'd like to do what we can or should do to at least apply ordinances to it. If it says you can't do it till 10:00 a.m., all right, I guess you do it at 10:00 a.m. But I don't know what all, uh, we have at our disposal to modify it or, or stop it. But I, maybe just me, I don't want those things flying over my house at 6:00 a.m. on Memorial Day, Saturday.
So Sarah, is there a, well, there's the fireworks thing that has been, that, that requires a permit?
It depends, so most, I guess I will, well, I guess I'll answer your question. I was going to say, I was going to go a different direction. There, on certain days of the year, you're allowed to, uh, set off fireworks that you can buy at the store. And then there's also a separate ordinance that deals with the larger, um, commercial grade that you hire somebody to do, that requires a permit that's approved by the Township Board. There's an ordinance for that. The stuff you can buy at the store, anybody can buy, that, there's certain days of the years that the state does not allow a township to regulate, um, when that can happen.
Do those days coincident with that day?
Yeah, there's days around Memorial Day weekend. I don't know the, the day, the days specifically, it may be the whole weekend, it may be a part of the weekend. A lot of them are the whole weekend until 11:00 or 1:00 a.m., I can't remember.
And then, okay, so then what about, uh, Bill's question about, uh, air, air, not, what do you call it? Ultralight activity, whatever they're called.
So we don't have a noise ordinance in the township, that's something the Township Board would need to adopt for a noise ordinance.
Can we adopt it tonight? In traffic and air, and, you know, and, and two-night lodging and trailers and about, uh, I mean, really, is there no permits? So I can have about 500 people on my property and fly around, and I don't have to tell them.
Well, it all depends. I'd encourage you to talk to Bob, to call the Township Supervisor, um, direct your questions to him, and figure out.
We just put that RV thing in, right? That was recent.
Right, well, that was in there before, and the zoning ordinance about camping on your property and stuff like that, so that language has changed a little bit, requiring permits if you want to use a camper on your property. So, uh, that's in there, so, like, the camping has to, you have to have a permit for that. So in last year, they had those permits.
Has one been submitted?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
So, I mean, that's what I mean, I, I can see eight weeks from now, oh, it just happened again. No permits, no ordinances, no rules, no consideration.
I'd encourage you to get ahold of the supervisor, to talk to him about it.
Okay, thank you. I will.
Bob, you had some, a comment.
So, again, just while perusing this stuff, I came across something that caught my eye. This is kind of off-topic, it's more a question for Sarah more than anything. So for a village residential lot, the minimum lot width is 50 feet, and the minimum square footage is 20,000 square feet, which means you'd have to have a 400-foot depth or dimension in, in one to accommodate that. So I suppose that on some of the lake lots, like over here off of Legacy and what, they, you know, they, they run quite a ways out there, so you could probably accommodate that. But for the off-water lots that are in the main block down there around Public Dock and Prospect and Third, most of those lots were all plotted out at 50 by 150. So what's, what's the, are, are they just buildable but as a non-conforming lot?
Yeah, if they don't have the, the 20,000 square feet, it's a non-conforming lot, you can build on it as long as you meet your setbacks.
So, well, going ahead with that, look at the setbacks on these things. 20 feet from one direction, 15 feet from another, and 10 from either side.
Yeah.
It's a pretty small structure that you're trying to put up there.
Yeah, those, I think that needs to be updated. I mean, it's just not reasonable. I mean, granted, when you're looking at a village and you're looking at 50-wide lot, 50-foot wide lots, you really need sewer to be able to get them actually 50 feet, because you got well and septic issues, you know, and the 20,000 is just about a half an acre, which well and septic are going to kind of regulate that, that pushes that all into that. But I think it would make, it's not realistic, because you cannot subdivide land that's 50 by 400, because there's a four-to-one width to depth ratio to divide land, so you can't do it that way. So there's a lot of things that you're, this, that doesn't work, that doesn't add up, so. In this zoning ordinance rewrite, well, it's not a rewrite, it's more of an update, cleaning up, consistency, uh, we didn't, there's no changes in any of the setbacks or any of that information. It's something that we could look at, or it's something that we could mark down to say, we need to come back and look at this further, maybe once we look at the master plan, and the master plan kind of directs us to what the zoning ordinance should say about the village district, because the master plan doesn't really help us in the village very much, does it? So, um, that can kind of give us some vision, maybe, what those lots should look like, what size they should be, um, if there needs to be some sort of sewer water available or something. Not to say that it has to go in, but if you're looking long-term and what you want to look at, you may have to look at some other systems if something were to become available in some way.
Any other questions or comments from the commission members? Sarah, do you have any comments?
I do not believe so.
Okay, so I guess we'll move into the, if there's any public comment. Anyone step forward and? You have the comment card by chance? Or you can fill one out on your, I think we know who you are, so, yeah, you can, you can comment, and we'll just get, before you move on.
I'm Judy, is it I'm?
Yes.
I'm Judy Culca, and I live right over here on San Reno Trail. And I'll, I'll tell you, I was a little concerned when I saw that part of the unfinished business was, can you hear me, I'm not close enough? Strategic priorities for the 2022 master plan review. And I've been seeing things sometimes where there, there's things on the agenda, and all of a sudden, something gets passed without much discussion or anything. So I was really happy to hear some of the discussion tonight about the master plan stuff, and that it's going to be an ongoing process. And there are some others in the community that are concerned, as concerned as I am about possible. as I am, about possible untoward decisions that might be made, that will affect a lot of our community neighbors, who are upset about some of the things that happened this past year, speaking, speaking specifically about what Bill's been talking about, what happened over at the airpark, and I, I don't know what role the planning commission takes in trying to make sure that the community agrees with what the new lot owner might want to do with that, or I don't, I don't, I don't know how that goes, but I'm glad to hear that you guys are talking about it now, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Spencer, 709 Northwest Torch Lake Drive, Key Wade. What am I, I'm going to ask you a couple trivia, trivia questions for next, next month. How did Key Wade get its name? So, think about that. I'll tell you next month.
I believe the answer is in what we were supposed to read.
It could be. Couple scattered comments. Number one, don't forget to include in your master plan, things you don't want. You know, if you want two or three things, I think that's great, there might be a thing or two you don't want. I think one of the biggest challenges this township faces, like many others around us, is we have no infrastructure to attract business. Sewers, curbing, water, surface water control, those, those are tough things, internet accessibility, although we're making progress there. Okay, money. The township, with COVID money from the largess of the federal government, which thank all of us for paying our taxes, got about $135,000. Now, knowing the board, they probably have already thought of what, how they're going to allocate that, but they're having a budget hearing coming up in a few weeks, I think it's on March 15th, and one of the things they're going to do is finalize the budget, and the public has some input to that budget hearing. So, how motivated are you? It's easy for me to say that, because I know you're all busy. Couple other things, Chris Grobel was the township planner for several years, I was supervisor when he got hired, and I was no longer on the board, or a township official when he left, and, and he was in charge of the last master planning effort, the air went out of the balloon with that effort, it never caught on, never got a lot of public support, and frankly, it was kind of disappointing to me, but I did complete my survey, so. Just a point of information, Eagle controls the Great Lakes, or not the Great Lakes, it controls inland lakes, the Army Corps of Engineers controls the Great Lakes, the Army Corps establishes the ordinary, ordinary high watermark on the Great Lakes. Eagle controls the body of water in our inland lakes, so if you want to think about Torch Lake, it's not the surface, because the DNR controls the surface, and what happens on the surface, but the body of water is under the primary control of Eagle. And then there's the Soil Conservation Office that has no control over either, but has, has to issue soil permits along waterfront properties, so all these people get involved in groups, and they're really great people, and they work pretty hard, because they're always in conflict with everybody. But, just a point of information there, as you go through a, a planning process, I find that I enjoyed your conversation today, and I'll go home and tell my wife that, and she'll look at me, I'll show you one of those looks, but, you know, I'm losing it again, but, you got some tough issues there. So, Chris Grobel was a credible guy, a guy named Jim Walworth, off in a different direction, was the chair of the planning commission when the first annual report, as required by state statutes, was given. So Jim's been gone for about 10 years, used to live over on San Marino Trail here, good guy. If you're going to do some research on ordinary high watermark, I would encourage you to take a look at a professional, and nothing against Bill, straight iron, I'm sure he knows a lot, but that, why don't you pick Bob Spencer? Because, you know, I could give you research on ordinary high watermark, too, but I'm not a professional, and I don't think Bill's a professional, I think he's a good guy, I think he's a bright guy, I think he knows a lot, but the county drain commissioner told me, he knows of no lake in Antrim County that has an ordinary high watermark. Then I have here tonight that Milton Township has an ordinary high watermark, and maybe Oak Rapids Township has one, you know, you can't do it with, he said, she said, you know, get somebody who has a credible background in dealing with governmental terminology and issues, and can step back from being a Bob Spencer who is a resident. Anyway. So do your own research. Hire somebody to do it for you, don't appoint Bob Spencer to do it. You'll probably get mine anyway, but, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your efforts tonight, it's encouraging to me to see people like you sitting in the positions you have. It's a lot more complicated than you thought it was going to be, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
You said that you were able to obtain some funding for the township, $135,000?
Oh, I, I didn't.
No, that's the.
The federal government, it's, it's the COVID money.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so he's.
And I'm not sure it's been assigned yet, but it's $135,000.
So you could. It's not necessarily earmarked for any one of the things.
We don't know.
It's earmarked for COVID recovery, which can be spent on salary and research and development at the local level, so you might be able to conjure cook out of some of that for some initiatives from the planning commission.
Thank you for your thoughts tonight.
Can I ask a question real quick? You got me wondering, there was, at some point, I feel like, what is the gentleman's name, I can't think of his name right now, everybody loves him, anyway, are we able to, are we supposed to, is it legit for us to be researching things ourselves, there was at one point, and maybe it was just in regards to an application, probably was, just in regards to an application for something that we shouldn't be doing the research ourselves, we only should have you do it?
Yeah, if it's application-related, at least like talking to other members of the public, or the applicant, or anything like that, I mean, I would encourage you to do your own research, the only thing that I would caution you about is if you, every, not everybody should reach out to, you know, tip of the mitt watershed, or everybody reach out to Eagle, so, and I don't know how to deal with that, I guess, if it's like, hey, I have this question, do you know, is anybody else working on it, just because we don't need to be, you know, harassing them with every, telling the same, everybody the same story. But I would encourage you to look and try to find information, you know, online, or if you need to reach out, and then if you have anything that's available prior to the meeting, I can put in the packet, kind of like Denise had a couple months ago, you know, then you have a chance to look over and do your own research based on her research. So no, there's nothing that would limit you, that's just my only caution is everybody reaching out to the same person. All right, thank you.
So, oh.
We had a comment on the livestream from a Jerry Culca.
Yep.
He said, the annual planning commission report should be in Kathy's office, Bob Spencer alerted me to it, I did it annually, Laura was right in saying I did one, I used a format, but it can be changed.
Thank you.
He just touched me with something about that.
Tell him thank you from us.
He says that the reports should be available in Kathy's office, and we also.
Thank you. So, I think we've accomplished everything we set out to tonight, so, I'd like to, someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
I thought maybe I missed it or something, I don't think anyone.
No.
Oh, I thought you said you made the motion.
No, I was seeking one, I confused myself there.
I moved that the meeting be adjourned.
I do that work all the time, I second things before. I'm sorry, do you want to do it over?
I'm getting tired.
Well, I had just thought to myself, I'm so moved, and then you said second.
Do you want to do it over? Sorry.